All right, good evening everyone. Call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Welcome everyone tonight. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Ohm.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Heglin.
Yes.
Clatt.
Yes.
Schrager.
Yes.
All right, with that brings us to the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the next Conflict of Interest Disclosure. There was one waiver request for our meeting this time. And since everybody has, I'm assuming, had the chance to review it, seeing the following conditions have been met: that the individual has provided full written disclosure, the school board has reviewed the essential terms of the contract, and the terms of the contract are fair and reasonable and not contrary to public interest, I would entertain a motion to approve the waivers presented.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Heglin. Clatt. Odie.
Yep.
Schrager.
Epstein.
Ohm.
Yes. All right, thank you. That takes us to the approval of the minutes from our regular meetings which are not presented tonight. However, they are on the website for review and we will approve those at the next board meeting, if that's okay with everyone. With that, that takes us, community input, hearing none. They are financial items. Mr. Lombard, bills and claims.
Okay, any questions on the bills and claims from the board?
I think this was in the bills and claims. There was, I was just curious about the $2,000 payment to MAC Doctors for high school computer repairs. Is that already some computers with the Montone that needed repairing that the students couldn't manage?
Yes, there's a couple of screens, both staff and student. So we're not going to blame it all on the students. I did have a couple noted. Any other questions from the board? On page four, I had one noted, Earth Bend, $253,000. That was 312 HP tablets for K-8. They all went to. They were late in getting here. They got tied up in customs for a month, sitting in some shipping container, so I don't know. That's the way it goes sometimes. So they're a little late getting in here, but now they're deployed and out there. On page six, I had another one noted, $24,000 Golden West Technologies. $8,600 of that was for a piece of equipment for filtering with the one-to-one initiative, filtering, content filtering. And the rest of it was software for filtering. Majority, why we had to buy that is for the one-to-one initiative so we could filter stuff outside the district. So when you take your computer somewhere else, it filters outside there at the same time as just internally. Before, we just had an internal filter, which was much easier. Total bills of $711,000, I believe it was. I did have one more on page 14 noted, the Career Academy payment to Sioux Falls School Districts. That's half payment of $50,000. Total of $100,000 for 40 slots that we buy from the CTE Academy. Total of $711,787. Pay vouchers of $37,000 and food service bills of $108,000.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight. No to approve bills and claims.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay, carrying through with the cash report for the month of September. Just under $6 million coming into the month. $1.6 million of receipts and $3.3 million of disbursements. Left $4.2 million at the end of September. $3.8 of it was in the general fund. $16,000 in the special education fund. $400,000 in the pension fund. $25,000 in the bond redemption fund and $30,000 in the enterprise fund. The $1,625,000 is itemized in the next two pages. Investment report follows that of $3 million CD. Payroll and benefit summary follows that. $1,657,000 of payroll for the month of September. It's the first month of the new teacher contracts. And the financial statements. The first one is a revenue report. This is the end of the first quarter for the '16-'17 school year. 25 percent. Revenue is really gets scrutinized or skewed, I guess is what I'm trying to say at the beginning of the year like that. It takes about, to get through about six months before it starts meeting percentages in a reasonable fashion. The expenditures, on the other hand. The general fund, you can see, is at 25 percent, 24.9 percent. Handwritten in the numbers from last year at the same time. So it shows you how we compared to last year. Nothing alarming that I have to report on any of the funds. On the special education fund, quite a bit less than it was last year. We haven't made a payment to East Dakota Co-op yet this year. So that's the reason for that. Food service department, at the end of September. Once again, that gets skewed at the beginning of the year. Shows $87,000 loss compared to $25,000 loss last year. Included in that is $40,000 of work comp expenses that I did not have in there last year in September. I didn't have them in there until October, I believe it was. So that would make a big difference there. Trust and agency statement, $160,000 of amounts held for others. Any questions on the financial statements? You'll start getting them every month from now on. I usually wait for the first quarter to get done to submit them to you though, just to try to get a little more meaning out of them.
Any questions on the financial report for Mr. Lombard? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our general business items. Sorry, I did interrupt. Takes us to our general business items. First off, we have under administration reports, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you. A couple of things before we get into our accountability report card overview. Our school district received a grant from the Brandon Community Foundation in the amount of $9,000. This grant was provided to us for the backpack program. The backpack program is ultimately a program where we are able to provide children that are in need of food over the weekend when they're away from the school, a backpack that goes home with items that are easily prepared and whatnot. So that amount of money will ultimately fund the school's portion of that program for one operating year. So that presentation will be made at Oak and Vine. We'd certainly encourage as many people as possible to attend and support the Brandon Community Foundation and we appreciate their support of the Brandon Valley School District. Every school within our district has a child or children who participate in the program. So it's a district-wide item. I also want to let the board know that the second meeting of the month, we will be having some special presentations and some items coming, so be prepared. This next meeting, we will have a special visit from one of our schools, the Brandon Valley Intermediate School. They were recently highlighted statewide on a special program, on a new program that they're implementing there. It's getting some nice recognition, so they're going to provide us with an overview. So look forward to that this next month, or this next meeting of the month. Also, Associated School Board School Law Seminar, October 19th in Sioux Falls. If anyone is interested in attending, please let me know. I also want to make everyone aware that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. I would like to personally thank Member Heglin for serving on a state work group that is currently working on the topic and improving that throughout the state of South Dakota. And then also want to specially thank Principal Palmer and Principal Foster for presenting on our Walk to Read Program and our ITI and our literacy program for that group. And then that has also been put out there for anyone in the state of South Dakota who would like to view that as well. So, those few items prior to getting into the accountability report card. So I think the first and foremost, one of the most important things for the board, for parents, for our patrons and our public to understand, surround the school academic accountability process and then also the process that plays in student learning and our district's preparations for student learning. So I want to show you how those two align, but remember that the ultimate goal is student learning and improved academic performance. So ultimately, the accountability process that we as a district have, and all districts in the state of South Dakota have is, right now, we are reporting out our academic performance. We are held accountable to our public and to our patrons. We assess students and the various indicators. Districts then take the time to review that data to ensure its accuracy and the cycle repeats. Now, that is ultimately the process for academic accountability. I would then draw upon this as the process that we take to maximize student learning through data-driven instruction. So I would tell you that curriculum instruction planning and design begins, if you want to put a month on it, let's talk about April-ish. Maybe a little sooner, maybe a little later. It's after we get that accountability data, but it all works together. District informative assessment happens early in a school year. I would draw upon DIBELS, STAR. There are also informal assessments such as red light, green light, thumbs up, thumbs down. All of those items are assessments that our teachers use in the classroom to drive instruction. So then we have data-driven instruction throughout the school year. So you could say from August to the test date, which is, you know, in that April timeframe approximately. There are naturally some assessments between there to track how students are doing and whatnot, but that is ultimately what our goal is, is data-driven instruction. We then land back on the state assessment. Smarter Balanced Assessment and then also the D-Step Science Assessment is what was previously used for science. So the state assessment is then taken and then, as an organization, we review those assessment results ultimately, not only at a district level, but also at a school level, drilled all the way down to an individual child level so we're able to plan our curriculum and instruction to best meet the needs of those children and ultimately improve academic performance. So that's how the two cycles work together to ensure student learning. So real quick, an overview of the school performance index. At the high school level, we're talking about there being three indicators. Student achievement, which is the smarter balanced assessments in ELA and math, and then the D-Step in science for 11th graders. High school completion. There are two components of high school completion. There's a four-year cohort rate, which is ultimately your regular general four years graduation rate. And then there's also a completer rate, which is the additional number of kids that take that fifth year or beyond. You then have a college and career readiness indicator and that deals with the ACT assessment and also the NCRC, which is the National Career Readiness Certificate. So that's how, that's what the indicators that make up the high school performance index. The average state high school SPI score was 66.57. And then I thought, just to bring it to districts of our size and likeness, we figured the average ESD high school SPI score, and that was 67.56. Okay. Elementary and middle schools are ultimately measured within the school performance index by these three indicators. Student achievement, which is smarter balanced assessment, ELA in math, and then also the D-Step with fifth grade and eighth grade. Academic growth, which deals with trend lines for students from third to eighth grade. And then lastly is attendance. Attendance is figured on the number of students or the percentage of students that attend 94 percent of the time. This is an item that I would hope they change as a student that attends 92 percent of the time consequence to 100 percent. So you have to attend 94 percent of the time ultimately to count. So real quick, the average South Dakota elementary SPI is 54.17. Average ESD elementary SPI is 59.51. And then the average intermediate school, middle school SPI, 51.26. Average ESD intermediate school, middle school is 55.57. A trend that I'm seeing statewide is that our middle schools are tracking a little lower. Our intermediate schools and middle schools are tracking a little lower than our elementary schools are for whatever reason. We may have some professional opinions on that. So anyway, that's the general makeup of school performance index and how they look. You are assigned a number and ultimately a classification. It is very important to know that classifications were held over this year because of the recent federal law that was reauthorized. No child left behind formerly. Now, Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA. So the classifications were held over, so whatever schools were last year, they are this year. They did not reconfigure those classifications. Okay, so real quick, those are our SPI scores. I would tell you that we exceed both the state and ESD averages for all schools and vastly exceed in most situations and most circumstances. So it's very good. Sure. Good? Awesome. Okay, so real quick, ELA, these are the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced in our district in comparison to the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced statewide. So ELA, third grade, 17 percent higher within the Brandon Valley School District in comparison to the state. 11 percent approximately in math. Fourth grade ELA, 22 percent higher. Math, 21 percent. Again, percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced. This includes all elementarys, of course. Fifth grade ELA, math and science as fifth grade tests in science. ELA, 6 percent higher than the state average. Math, 9 percent higher. And in science, 12 percent higher. Sixth grade ELA and math, again, percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced within the district, approximately 16 percent higher in ELA and approximately 12 percent higher in math. Seventh grade ELA, 12 percent higher in ELA, 15 percent higher in math, approximately. Eighth grade, we have ELA assessment, math assessment, and then the science D-Step. ELA, approximately 16 percent. Math, approximately 22 percent. And science, approximately 17 percent. 11th grade, again, we have ELA, math and science. This is a percentage of students scoring proficient or proficient and advanced in our school and district in comparison to the state. So as you can see there, in ELA, it's approximately 16 percent higher. Math is approximately 19 percent higher. And science is approximately 18 percent higher.
The district question, the district number would include students that are not attending our high school but are in 11th grade.
Correct.
Part of this district or maybe attending an alternative education center.
Correct, yes, absolutely correct. Your old school would be the largest portion of that difference, yes. Great question. And previously, we had reported out the ACT data, but it's so impressive, it's nice to say it again. State of South Dakota, we score one and a half points higher than the state of South Dakota and nearly three points higher than the national average. So the state of South Dakota performs extremely well in the ACT in comparison to the country and then the Brandon Valley High School takes it to the next level. So very impressive. Okay, so graduation and completion rate. First to the left, that's your four-year cohort graduation rate. Our graduation rate was a little over 94 percent and our completer rate was 98 percent. So I know that was quick. Sometimes data makes everyone stare and look funny. So I fact that a brief overview would best provide you with that information. And then if you are interested, on the state of South Dakota DAD website, you can drill down, you can look at the public report card. It will show you more information than you probably ever wanted to know about school performance. But that is definitely out there and available. I would note that our district, or our schools within our district, go through the school improvement process, which they drill down that data at the school level and then also at the individual child level, looking for strengths and opportunities for growth. So that goes back to that cycle that I talked about where we ensure student learning. So a couple of quick final thoughts on our achievement data. I want to say great job to our students and our staff, our administration and our parents. Absolutely wonderful job on the assessment and on getting to school and the performance on the ACT. Great job, well done. A message that I shared with our staff after the release of the report card was, be proud. Very proud. Not satisfied. There is another level, let's go there. So that was the message that went to staff and I would portray that same exact message to our students and our parents. I want to thank our staff, our parents and our community for their time, effort and commitment to our kids. The great teaching that is happening in the classrooms is demonstrated through our data. At this point in time, I would entertain any questions or comments you may have. Seeing none, I will get out of here and we'll go from there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much Superintendent Larson. It's always nice to hear at the start of the school year and keep the good work. Mr. Lombard, anything else tonight? Okay. Thank you. That takes us to the high school, Dr. Talcutt.
Here tonight, so I will maybe touch base a little bit on Friday. I think when we take a day off of, a day away from kids for school, it's nice to maybe explain why that is or what the purpose of that is or what we hope to gain from that. And so, you know, district-wide, our kids are expected to perform in all sorts of different areas, not just in the things that we test them, but all these other areas. And it's, once you get going in the school year, sometimes it's hard to get teachers together and to really continue to go through those things, everything from the results to whatever it might be. And so Friday was an opportunity across the district for the staff to work in groups that maybe grade alike or subject alike and so forth. So at the high school level on Friday, about half of our staff was in this room working on the digital initiative grant with teachers from Harrisburg, from T.E., from Watertown, beginning that first big step in that process. We had someone from the T.I. office in Rapid City here spending the day with us, helping us with the whole copyright piece and how you do that. We had a couple of different staff members here from Apple, again, helping us because eventually the thought is that these things will eventually be put out there in the Ibook world. And then all of these teachers gathering together. We also had an Apple professional educator with us Tuesday through Friday. And so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Erin worked with the staff members, either going into their rooms or meeting with them at the end of the day, taking them through different programs or taking them really, how do you do something now and how might technology allow you to do that differently? And so she was really working a lot more with individual teachers or small groups of teachers rather than the large group. The other half of our teachers were with Mr. Schuckaway, working on kind of our data and digging into the numbers, not just the academics, but looking at our Carolina Institute Drug and Alcohol Survey numbers, digging into what the data that you just saw, but only into a much deeper level. Also maybe kind of identifying some of our kids that maybe we could spend a little bit more personal attention time and so forth, not just the academic side, but the social side as well. And so a good day for a lot of people to maybe take a look at some things a little differently. And so, yes, it was a day away from kids, but I think a highly productive day and I'm sure that the other administrators would tell you that they found it to be a very productive day for their staff. You don't like to have a lot of days away from kids, but sometimes those things need to happen to help bear some of that other fruit that you get later on. So any questions about anything from the high school world? Challenge Day is coming up. If any of you want to volunteer for that, we have a Challenge Days coming up on October 24th and 25th. We'd love to have you. We have to have at least 25 adults in order to host the 100 students that we hope to host each of those days. But otherwise, homecoming's over. We're settling in.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schuckaway, anything? Mr. Thorson?
First of all, our band did a first-ever for Brandon Valley Middle School. They marched in the Festival of Bands competition in Sioux Falls a week ago or so. And it was the first time they've ever done this. And they were one of three middle schools who performed at that. So that was a great thing. The kids loved it. Mr. Lopesky came to me about a month ago and said, "I'd love to do this. Can we do this?" I said, "Never done it. Let's try it." So I think it was a wonderful experience for our band students and it's one that I assume will go from year to year now. So I just want to give kudos to those people. I have two staff members down in Austin, Texas right now. Becky Moore and Kim Skipstad are down in Texas presenting to the middle-level administrators and teachers down in Austin on our writing strategies that we do at the middle school. So Nick just got a text from her. It went very, very well. Once they come back, they will present to you what they talked about down there. So those two were excited to go. I think they were nervous this afternoon, presenting to a bunch of people they did not know, but I'm sure it went very, very well. And lastly, on Wednesday, our annual ESD middle school principals meet once a year and then it's on Wednesday in Huron. So I will make the trek to Huron on Wednesday. The agenda is full. Usually we run out of time. By the time we get about halfway through the agenda, and we talk about a variety of topics, it's a great time to network with those other middle school principals to see maybe what they're doing, exchange ideas, strategies. I know test scores are a big topic that we will talk about. What do you guys do versus what somebody else does? So it's a wonderful time. Like I said, you also network. Then all of a sudden, the phone keeps ringing about a week later and things like that. So it's a wonderful time. So looking forward to that on Wednesday. Questions from me? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skipstad, anything tonight? Mr. Bab, anything? Okay. Ms. Foster?
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Larson for his assistance and also the board for your approval on hiring an additional first-grade teacher. That transition has gone very well. We would never know today that we had, you know, large classrooms and they did their little desk parade and life is just going on as normal. So it was a great decision and thank you so much for your support. I'd like to also give thanks to the school board for allowing Paula Gordon to attend the Healthy Generation Conference out in Washington DC here. She went out and accepted the bronze award for both Fred Assam Elementary and Valley Springs Elementary. And so I think she did a fun run while she was out there, and it encompassed quite a few of the sites. So she did the sightseeing tour by running, of course, with a lot of PE teachers, but we are proud to bring that award home too, as well as Valley Springs. So there are quite a few pictures in the Assam Anchor this month, please look at all of them. It's been absolutely delightful taking those pictures. There are quite a few in there with Paint the Plow. If you're not familiar with that during winter, if you ever drive down the street and see the plows that have all the painted designs on them. Fred Assam is one that we've done that, I think this is our fifth year of doing Paint the Plow. They allow those Sioux Falls schools, and since we're in the city limits, to come up with a design, and the kids, we hand it over, when I say we, I see my art teacher, Mrs. Pearson and myself, work with about 28 fourth graders this fall, and they came up with a design, they scoped it all out, they chose the paint, they created how they were going to do that, and believe it or not, there was more paint probably on all of those 28 fourth graders than on the plow itself, but it turned out just to be a delightful project and the process that they went through, coming to consensus on the design and their work groups and everything, it was fabulous to be a part of that. So please look at the pictures in the Assam Anchor and enjoy all the fun things that we do.
Thank you. Mrs. Hayden, anything tonight? Mr. Horst? Mrs. Palmer? And Marge is not here. Mr. Henshaw, anything tonight? And Mr. Marsel? All right, there's no board policy tonight, so that takes us to general business items number one through three. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to personnel item number one, to approve the recommendation to hire Marie LaRocque as a long-term substitute for Macy Archer at RBE for $30.62 an hour to begin approximately on November 29th for 10 weeks. Superintendent Larson, did you want to comment on that, please?
Madam Chair, typically we do not hire or do not bring in substitutes for SLPs in short-term absence. So if you're gone one day, there isn't an individual that comes in and provides those speech-language services to our children because it's such a specialty and it requires certification. Now, in this situation, being that we do not typically hire the short-term folks, we have one of two choices, basically. One choice would be to contract through a business that offers such services or to find an individual who is certified to provide those services and comes to an agreed-upon rate. I would commend Director Bab on his efforts and his ability to find this individual. So we look forward to entering into that relationship, and I would certainly recommend that recommendation to hire.
There are no questions from Superintendent Larson? I would entertain a motion to approve personnel item number one is presented? So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to personnel consent approval items, one through three. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented?
I did have a question on this next group. Is it appropriate to ask it now? Okay. The question I had was Van Geest, there was conditions of his employment, but the prior, help me understand why some of these, there's conditions of employment and some there're not. Daniel Van Geest was a successful completion background, completion of business office. I understand, you know, that makes sense to me. I'm just curious, there was other, or there wasn't any conditions?
I can speak to that, Carrie. Some of the principals or directors, they put that in there under their recommendation to hire, but quite frankly, it's 100% of the people that we hire are subject to those conditions. Everybody is subject to the background check and subject to the business office, getting their paperwork done. It's just a matter of how they presented on the, on the recommendation hire form, and it probably should be more standardized that the people report the same things time after time. So when you see those, you don't think that somebody is being susceptible to it or subjected to it and somebody else isn't.
That was kind of my thought. I assume there was probably that work going on for all the hires, but when I looked at the forms and it just, it kind of stood out to me a little bit, like we got background work on some and some on others, so thanks.
Madam Chair? Carrie, there's actually state statute that permits temporary employment of an individual until successfully completion of a background check, as background checks can sometimes take a little while. So ultimately, they report nothing on there, and then it's temporary until we actually get the final, final item. So is there state statute on that that allows for that temporary employment?
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through three under consent personnel as presented? Or to approve personnel items one through three?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There's one item there for information only for your review. That takes us to communication. Looks like there were no building permits from September, and there's also a couple thank you notes there to the board from a couple individuals. So with that, that takes us to the formal reports, and does anyone have a formal report at this time they would like to report on?
I guess the building and grounds would like to make a short report. Last week, Carrie, Paul, Superintendent Larson, and Ty, Ty Henshaw, excuse me, and myself met, and we went over the building and ground as far as what has happened and what is down the road to look at as what may happen. And we basically reviewed the footprint of all the buildings, which was interesting, and then we did just a real quick review of enrollment in each one of these buildings. And there's no, at this time, there is no need to be alarmed at any number of enrollment in any certain building because there can be things applied to move things around, especially in the elementary area. So we're sitting very well there, and there's no plans at the present to really pursue anything down the road, short-term. We also then went to review, back in 2013, we had a facilities committee, and we put together at that time, and I was on it, we had like six bullets of interest, and of those six, we have two that we have not completed, and one is the construction of a secured entrance at the Brandon Elementary School, and another one is keep looking for additional land within the district as we see needed. Then we discussed the projects that were completed or in their final stages for this budget year, and then we also looked at projects that we need to pursue. And if, let's see. And so for those of you that are viewing this maybe for the first time through the television, Brandon has a real good, has a real good plan. They always lay out a five-year capital outlay program in which it can be tweeted as far as how things are needed. Some have always been up there, but there always seems to be, there might be more urgency to put something else in place of it. So between Ty and Paul and Superintendent Larson, they, we've got this five-year plan. And so we look at the projects and we sort of looked at them. And we have a few projects in the wings that we would like to look at for this next coming year. One of them would be, like I said, the middle school's secure entrance and maybe some other internal components to that. And continue on, if you see on the, on the board here, every year we have a few other projects on the, on the table to look at. So we feel like, and then we feel like, and when we look at these projects, we look at the capital outlay budget, and we also work with what we know is needed and what we can maybe implement. And so if you go to the next page on our screen here, you will see that between the guys in the administration building, we have projected for the school year of 2017, 18, working in the middle school as far as putting in a secured entrance. And then briefly, a continuation of going on to the next year, we have maybe some projects in the stadium and track renovation area, as well as remodeling the high school's offices that have been vacated. And so that just sort of gives you a review of, or a snapshot of what we're looking at. Like, again, nothing's concrete, nothing is concrete until we really decide what we want to do. So this is just giving you a heads-up of what's going on, and if Carrie has anything else to add, I'd welcome.
I think the way to comment again is on, you know, as most folks know with the track, the new track, the ticket area and the work that's been done this year, we're going to give it about a year break here for planning and budgeting purposes as far as work. So we're again planning for that 18, 19 school year for further field work and stuff like that. So that's only a comment. Well, I guess one other, too, is just so patrons and folks know, there's, administration has set up what we sometimes refer to as trigger points. When student enrollment, call it student enrollment or school population hits a particular trigger, administrators, your board is working as proactive as they can be to make sure that our facilities are adequate and trying to stay ahead of the growth that we see in this area. So just to comment on that.
Vice Chair, already may I comment on just a couple items? First, first and foremost, I want to make certain that all of our patrons and parents understand that our middle school entrance is locked. It is locked down, it's currently, it's currently a situation where you have to buzz in, you're standing outside, you have to buzz in, and then once you enter, you enter into the commons area. Ideally, when we talk about the secure entrance, it will be a walk-in, buzz-in, enter the office, and then enter the commons area. So I just want to make certain that everyone understands that our middle school students are safe and that the entrance is locked and secured. I would also reiterate the fact that the sequential order in which items happen is absolutely critical as we plan for future growth. Like, so for example, as we look down to 21, 22, knowing that we are going to be staring at high school capacity issues in the near future, it's a situation where we've planned for a high school addition, while a high school addition will ultimately take over a parking lot. So to plan for that lost parking, that's where the idea behind field turf comes in. And then utilizing the high school, the old high school offices into classroom spaces, space allows us additional time to be fiscally responsible and prepare for ultimately paying for that high school addition. And then we always evaluate those trigger points, annually looking for, looking for need. So anyway, I just wanted to make certain that everyone was aware that our middle school front entrance is locked down and your children are safe. You have to be buzzed in. Thank you. Any questions I can entertain?
So I would add, just a brief note from the curriculum committee. We met for the second time this year, this month, and you know, as you all know, there's always a curriculum review and adoption that's going on on kind of an ongoing basis. This is the year that we are, we've adopted a new math program for K through four, and that is being implemented and evaluated, and it sounds like that's going very well. We, this is also the year that we're beginning to review a new adoption possibly for K through eight social studies, and so both of those are going on and things are going well. And there also is some rollout of additional standards-based report cards for a couple of additional grades, and that will be, more information is going to be coming for, for parents about that around the time of conferences, just prior, you know, just prior to conferences, just after conferences, and that'll be rolling out as the year goes on. So, and I also just want to make one other comment, not necessarily related to curriculum committee, but I just wanted to say I really appreciate seeing the reports from staff members, teachers, administrators who are able to go to Washington DC, to Texas, to various places to network. You know, South Dakota has, we're very fiscally responsible, and when I first came on the board, nobody was taking any trips anywhere because we were so, we were recovering from the cuts, and it's really nice to see our professional teachers, our professional administrators getting the opportunity to go out and network and continue their professional growth. So I'm really happy to see us making that happen.
And safety committee also met, and we are working on just kind of reviewing a few items and getting things up to speed and something, it's a process that, you know, Mr. Schleckle, Mr. Thorson said will take a while, but you know, just kind of overview of emergency manual procedures, making sure that, you know, just that we're going over everything to make sure things are in place and that there's, you know, no changes that need to be made and getting some extra set of eyes on how things are done. So appreciate the work that that committee does also. Anyone else have anything they would like to add? If not, that takes us to the end of our regular agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.